Twenty two eight over there. City Library Ball, it's February sixteen twenty twenty one. I took calling to six oh six. Over staff for the Pledge of Philip. Okay, one they got. Uh, James to flag. Of United States of America. I might be only ones.
It might be helpful to turn off your video cuz you're kind of um. Going in and out.
I think we lost her.
Is that good?
That's better.
Better now.
I'm sorry, I've been having problems with my internet. And we have been pushed back for an appointment to my house, okay? Should we start again or we're good to go?
We're good.
Hmm, okay. Uh, can we have a roll call please?
Vice President Paul Pua.
Present.
Trusty Santos.
Present.
Trusty Dos.
Present.
And um President Logarta uh is unable to be with us this evening.
Okay. So I hope everybody had a chance to review the agenda tonight. If there is no updates, um. Can I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Motion.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, for the minutes from last meeting on January nineteen twenty twenty one, is there any motion to move?
Motion.
Second.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Can we have director's report please?
Sure, um. By popular demand, um we have an an update on library services, but we have. I think finally gotten into a groove, a temporary groove, but a groove, um we have um. Resumed curbside and um last week we had um good attendance. I look I looked online and it looked like we had about three hundred and eighteen people come to um each of the four locations. Ceremony continues to be the busiest because it has um the most hours and the largest collection. Um and parking is is fairly easy, especially now that the parking lots open and there were two hundred and thirtieth ceremony. So but um people came to curbside at all four locations, um. Not surprisingly, the um number of items that are being mailed has declined quite a bit. Um last week, we only mailed out um twenty eight parcels um and bef- during the time that we were unable to do curbside. Um we had had about a hundred and sixty weeks, so that's that's much better, um it's much more sustainable for us. Um and it's much more efficient to get things to be, so we're happy with that. We're happy to be able to continue offering it though for people who aren't able to get to the library. Um in addition to picking up people's holds, um we have the tax forms. Uh which each year are actually something that are in pretty high demand. Um people call before we ever receive them looking for their forms, so um that was a big theme last week. Um the libraries all should have all of the forms that we carry, which is just the the main forms. Um both state and federal now and people are coming in regularly. Um we're also providing information about um what uh tax assistance is available at this time. Cuz I know on the rec side, they they are hosting an in-person tax um assistance service right now. Um we also are doing um wireless printing again and people are are using that um not in high numbers. But I think for for someone who doesn't have a printer, that few times a year that you need a printer, this is a great option. Um I saw that we are also receiving some requests for freebie printing night. Um we are working on um doing some sort of uh browsing option for people. Because that is something that people are telling us they're missing. And I know and um Sarah could talk more about it if she wanted to, but I know that there are other projects that are um in the pipe. That really rely on curbside as the mechanism to to reach people, um for example. There's with the teacher at one of the high schools. Um book club, so we'll be giving out the books via the curbside. So it we're very happy to be able to do that again. Um it it rained and and everything was still okay, people waited in the rain, but um they were happy to get their book, so. I would say um that what we the system that we have in place right now is working well. And we do look forward to being able to bring people into the building at some point, but we're waiting until that's safe. That is that is the report of our update on up to the minute services of the library. Are there any questions?
I'm good, thank you. Okay. Okay. Did you report? Did you wanna report on the playaway? We have that on the playaway demonstration, you mentioned that, okay?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So now we're um going to trustees' report, so um.
Oh, I'm sorry, um no, Sarah Spence is with us tonight and she actually has. It's a playaway or several playways to um to show you if you'd be interested in seeing. We're we're very excited and Sarah Sarah actually has some experience from from previous to working for us with this and so.
We would love to hear from Miss Spence.
Okay, hi, good evening. Um so I just wanna say thank you first of all, Victoria, um C C P L A provided this money for us. And this um these playaway launchpads are just amazing. And so I I brought them, so you can see the packaging. Um it's like very sleek and it has the title. Um, sorry, I can't, okay, it has the title on the side and then on the back you can see the app. So um just to give you a little bit of background about these, um so they're basically. iPads, but they are only um app-based, um they're curated apps. Um by age, by subject, by theme. Um and so whatever apps are on them, they cannot like. Change, they can't get onto the internet, they can't do anything with them, um. But the best feature is that they don't need wifi to access these, so these can be taken anywhere. Um and I'll open it to show you what they look like, um. So inside the launchpad, it's like. Drop everything, okay, so this is the launchpad, so it's like small, basic, but it's very sturdy. And and it comes with um. A USB charger and um an adapter, so um. So every launchpad gets one of those um when they're checked out. And then on the inside of the launchpad, um you can't really see that well here, but it gives like basic instructions. It's so easy to get on, um there's just like a one-click um power button on. Um and. My son was playing it today cuz I I haven't played with them since. When I was a librarian in Georgia, we had these and they like we couldn't keep them on the shelf, they they were like off all the time. So when you get on, um you can make an avatar, so he made his little avatar and then um. Let's see, so then you when you continue, then you have your apps that you can choose from, um. And so most launchpads have ten apps and there are a few um that I got that have a little bit more. Um but it's, I mean, it's just basically like a home button, there's a back button, um. And then what I found out today was super cool, um you can actually. And there's a little button, you can see the analytics for your child, so you can see what they've been like learning. So my son today learned English Language Arts, Math, Critical Thinking, Science, Language Learning and Creativity. Um and then it just shows like what apps he used the most and um. So it's really like super easy, um and the only thing that we have to do when it gets returned is there's a reset button. Um and so we reset it and everything's cleared for the next person. And so it's super easy, um they're very easy to clean. I know that's gonna be a thing right now especially, um but um you can just use like a. Alcohol wipe, I guess, to clean it, um it's like the easiest thing, um so. Um these are gonna be so great for us, for um our community, our families that don't have wifi. And um we definitely wanna bridge this digital divide that we have in some areas of Bailey City. Um I think this is a great way to do that, um and these are all like learning games. So they're all teaching the kids something um for this. For what we got this time, we focused on early literacy and kindergarten readiness. So even though they have launchpads for all ages, even up to adult. Um from my experience, the most popular ones are the ones for early literacy. So kindergarten and under, because once they get a little bit older than that, then they're gonna be um. Using like probably real iPads and the computer more, um but. I just, I feel like this is such a great way for kids, young kids, to learn technology. And it's safe and they're durable and um. I I brought a couple more just to show, um so a lot of these are um. Like, I wrote down. The themes are like um. They're like shape recognition, letter recognition, color, music, building, um fundamentals of reading. Um record, uh let's see, problem-solving skills. Letter and word identification, imagination, matching skills, um phonetic awareness. There's so many things um that they're learning from these just by by playing these games. And that I saw a video from one library that had them. And that's what he said, it's just like these kids don't even realize that they're learning because they're having so much fun with with these, so. Um I did get a couple that are um language um based. So there's uh Learn Chinese With Me, this the the language ones do have more apps, so this has about twenty different apps. Um and then I I did get a Spanish one, Hughes, in Spanish, so. Um so with all of this money, we are able to get thirty-two launchpads. And we're gonna put them um between the branches. And we got thirty-two replacement USB cords and um thirty-two replacement adapters. Um just because from my experience, they don't always get returned when the launchpads get returned. So we just wanna make sure that we have all the extra pieces. For them, so I think that's all. Any question?
I I'm. I'm just with what the piece of device can do, you know, providing some of the early. Preschool readiness already, you know, for for the some of the children. Um a lot of parents now are, you know, um. Slowly now going back to work and they needed childcare, they needed preschool. But you know, due to the new requirements that that a lot of preschools now have, that they only have a cohort. Of children and that was from the beginning until now. And they're not accepting any more new enrollment until the order is revised and lifted. So I'm grateful for that, thank you, Victoria. That is, you know, thirty-two is better than nothing, it's it's a really good tool. I just have a tiny question, Sarah, when it comes to maintenance and to um if any. Um if something happened to it, um. Do we have coverage for, you know, like insurance and stuff like that?
Um yeah, so each launchpad, um it come, they normally come with one year um warranty. Um we were able to get two years of a warranty for each one, um. They don't cover like if the screen gets broken, um. But um they do, if we were trying to get a replacement, if like a screen was broken. They do give um discounts for that, so um that was like the main problem where I worked before is. I mean, even though they're durable, it's still, there's still a note on there that these are, you know. Uh technology, it's like, it's still fragile, I mean, um not not super fragile, but like we've had, we had some before that the kids like through. And then the screen shattered, so um in those instances, we would probably have to um pay. As um it wouldn't be as much as like a regular one, but yeah.
Thank you so much.
This is just a really cool, I think this is really cool opportunity to be a little bit creative around learning right now. And so I'm just like really excited, I think my just other curiosity. And maybe this is like an update for later, but I would love to hear what the response is to some of this technology or like how folks are using it. And if there's even a need to do like another pitch to fundraise or. Yeah, like if we did, you know, there's like opportunity to like add that up. Cuz I think it's a really cool opportunity and to Teresa's point too, like I know that's a need for parents right now, um. Especially as we they like continue to navigate like being at home too and not being able to be in school, so.
Yeah, um one of the things that Shayla and I are still working on and we would love feedback from you. Um is promoting these, um because these are great, like. In the library when people come in to see them, but when they can't come to the library right now, um. We're just trying to figure out how to promote them, where to promote them, um. You know, and a lot of the people that need them are not on social media, so um that's what we've um. Found out with a lot of our programming, the people that we want to come, they don't see our um programs on social media, so. Um just, I mean, we just got these, so we're still processing them, we're not completely ready to put them out yet. And so just some things to think about, if you have any great ideas, please share with us.
Sarah, have you? Have you, um, I know that you do Storytime and I always refer my parents. Of our site to go on it and share with them and they love it. Um have you done any, like, have you promoted the same way how you do Storytime? Maybe do like a tutorial?
Yeah, that's a great idea, yeah, I could do it on Storytime. For sure, it's a good idea.
Um, yeah, uh and then also I think I know that some preschools and childcare centers are. Uh the daycare centers are open, um I actually live underneath one. But I think those are also good places to tap into, I I tell my, I tell the kids all the time about the Storytime also, but. I know there's like a few in Daly City and and I know there's like some regulations, but some of them are open with like less kids. Um and that could be a good like learning opportunity for those two.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think if you even, like, I don't know if you all have email templates that that we can send out. Um but I'd be happy to do like a like a mass email sent to contacts and stuff, that would be helpful.
Okay, okay, thanks, yeah.
Okay, so. We're moving up to trustees' report. So, um. We had a great session last Wednesday where we spoke about our role as trustees. And went over priorities that we would like to focus on, um and one of them was budget. And we want to provide guidance on budget, once it's reviewed. We will advocate informally and in writing. To extend hours for Bayshore and John Daly Library. With an increase of one or two additional full-time staff. And this has been an ongoing topic from past year, last year until now. So hopefully, you know, as we. Start rolling the ball more that, you know, we somehow um come to a solution on this. And somehow we can um have that put in place right away. Um another thing that we discussed was collaboration with other boards. And would like to suggest for a joint meeting, you know, with other board members and also open to the community. To join and um share ideas and collaborate ideas and feedback and how to better um. You know, it took each auxiliary even in the libraries. Uh D C P L A, we will continue to work closely with fundraising, um. Also promoting memberships by attending monthly meetings, um. Madam President, um Angela informed me that she will be doing her best to attend those meetings. But if any of us. The uh three of us, um. Lauren, Justine and myself, you know, if we have any availability to our schedules. If our schedules are permitted, that we can take turns to attend those meetings. And also to promote to the poet laureate that um is coming up in April, so I'm looking forward to that. And um President Angela is working side by side with Victoria to assist her with. Um getting more sponsorships out there. And I'm so sure the other part that we covered was social media platforms, you know, like just what Sarah was was sharing. And we play a huge part in that, it's helped to promote the usage of libraries within our networks and also social media. Uh we can help promote libraries and recreation, also D C P L A, so you know. Whatever we represent, we represent all, not just one, so we pretty much. Where we represent all those um. All those categories and then a collaboration on programs. Um that that we can um. Um help to promote and what we can do for black, black history media the month. And um that was the question that I have is how can we help in that situation? So I'm just putting it out there for us so we can start collaborating.
That's a question to us, right, Teresa?
Yes, yes, ma'am, so. You know, how can we help to promote Black History Month? I know they have the smallest month of the year, which is only twenty-eight days, but um. What can we do to help? To just put out there, we don't have to have an answer, but that's one of the things that um Madam President was. Uh probably to my attention to bring it to all of us, to see what we can do to promote that. And maybe not for now, but then, you know, for the coming up year and every nationality that we. That we celebrate, how do we make ourselves available and educate ourselves to promote that? Okay.
Yeah, I think something that's coming to mind for me immediately is, and this is like props to Sarah and the team. But I think you all do a lot of great messaging and content creation on social media. Um even thinking from like what happened last year, um so I'm also curious to see what uh what you all are. Working on right now cuz I'm I'm definitely interested in like continuing to amplify, I feel like. Yeah, from like the content that we have in our libraries, like there's so much things, um. So that's that's initially coming up for me and then, yeah, start there.
Yeah, I've been seeing a lot of, I've been seeing a lot of promotion on social media as well, like in terms of books and like documentaries and movies. So I think um that's one step.
And we also have the Chinese New Year too as well, you know, celebrating that in the year of the ox. I was born in the year of the ox.
Okay, this is your money year, I'm just kidding. The good year, good year ahead for you. Um I think that's a good one and I I I guess this could be a an opportunity even to. Bring in different folks in the community and um something that we did for work was we had like for one of our. One of the projects that we were doing is we had Instagram takeovers where like some of our students would go on Instagram and like talk about. A topic, but I'm wondering if that could be something we can explore um. On like the library page and on social media as people are from at home, like if we have any readers or volunteers who would be. You know, maybe they can talk about like one of their favorite books um that's around the theme of the month. For like a few minutes on Instagram or something, or send us a video that we can um we can post.
Okay, well. Thank you. Um now I'm gonna turn the time to Miss Victoria for uh D C P L A updates, please.
Thank you so much, nice to see everybody, um. Yeah, we we are, we were very excited to see Ms. Amanda Gorman at the inauguration doing her poem. The timing couldn't have been better for us for our own youth poet laureate. Um I I want to clarify that Amanda Gorman was the first national youth poet laureate, but that was in twenty seventeen. And I noticed the media kinda got some of that wrong, we have a current national youth poet laureate. And um but but Amanda was the first one who was ever named and of course, everybody's talking about her, she's absolutely amazing. And we really hope that she will be a great inspiration for future Daily City Youth Poet Laureate applicants. We ended up having ten completed applications, which we think is pretty awesome considering it's a fairly specialized thing and um. You know, it's our first year, so out of those ten, I I'm absolutely confident that we have at least one. Who is going to make an excellent Daily City Youth Poet Laureate, so right now the judges are scoring the applications. And um we will know something soon, but we are not going to make our big announcement until our event on April seventeenth. So everyone is gonna have to just wait and see our wonderful event, it's, we've named it um D C P L A Ten Years Strong. Because it is also a celebration of our tenth anniversary, we were first founded in um twenty eleven. So it's, you know, the the event is going to be really threefold, it's going to be a celebration of our history, what we've done, who we are. Uh the naming of our Daily City Youth Poet Laureate and a fundraiser as well, we're gonna have a silent auction and we're soliciting sponsors. As um Ms. Teresa mentioned, Angela's been helping us with that. If anybody thinks of anybody that uh you know you think would be a great sponsor for our event, please uh let me know and I would love to pass along our sponsorship packet. And you know, if you have any connections with any companies, you know, of course, we're talking to our usual sponsors, but we're also always looking for. For new ones, you know, it's challenging this year when a lot of people have been hit very hard, a lot of companies that. Have been able to really support us in the past, just don't have the same capacity to do that this year, so. You know, we're we're just gonna do our best, um hopefully the silent auction will bring in some, maybe just some citizens who, you know, normally wouldn't be sponsoring. But maybe they'll see some of these fabulous auction items that we have and and wanna bid on them. Um so that's the main thing, just preparing for that event in April, um we're, you know, very. Pleased if any of you can kind of help us promote that, I'm working on the the graphics. I'm working on the, the graphics and to start actually doing that, that promotion through so, social media. And we're gonna send a postcard to members and stuff. So once we have that, you know, I hope you all like and share and all of that stuff. Help us get the word out. So, um, yeah, that's the main thing. Thank you guys for everything you do. I just want to say real quick what you were talking about earlier, how the library can address social, social change, things like Black History Month. I was applying for a grant today and one of the things they were asking was, you know, how is, you know, us and the library, but, you know, like they were talking about us specifically, but you know, as a, as a partner or the library, what sort of things are you guys doing to promote social justice and that sort of thing? And the first thing I thought of is, you know, I looked on the website and the, the reading lists that the library has come up with. I, I think that's, you know, that's one great way. Because, you know, you're saying a lot of people aren't on social media, but anybody uses the library, you know, a lot of them anyway, especially when the library's closed, they're using the, the online book holds and everything. So I, I, I just want to give a shout out to the library staff for coming up with those excellent reading lists, including a lot of picture books, which I think is amazing because some of these, you know, younger kids, we want to start them early. So kudos to the library staff as always for being amazing. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Victoria. Thank you very much. Okay, announcements and communications? No, no announcements? Okay. Um, I just saw some, I saw something in Facebook like, I don't know if it helps out, but, um, it's all these, um, these bunch of groups, like this group of group of friends. And what they did is they, they mimic, they, um, all the favorite arts, you know, like Mona Lisa. And they, um, they kind of like, what is the word? They kind of make it nowadays, like they, they did a, a, another version of Mona Lisa and then they did a Mona Lisa and how Mona Lisa will look like nowadays. And all the, you know, all the painters. I'll send it to, to Chayla. I will send to, I snap dropped the, I, I took pictures of them and it was so, it was so beautiful, you know, like maybe, uh, maybe some schools now, schools can go back or some of us, I, some of us can, like a competition or something, not a competition, but like to, to put, put it out there as another activity for adults. You know, for the library and maybe the youth. Um, yeah, that's my little announcement. Okay, so let's do agenda building. So I would like to, um, for agenda building, I would like to continue the same thing that we had to. We'll come back as far as the budget. And then also, um, having another date, setting a date for for that meeting, the joint meeting with other board members. And then, um, see what we can do, what we have so far as DCPLA, like any updates on the sponsorships and what we can reach out to. So I'm a challenge ourselves, girls, ladies, that I'm gonna put ourselves out there and don't be mad at me. We're gonna challenge ourselves that we're gonna find each of us a sponsor for DCPLA. So when we come back, next board meeting, that each of us will have one or two. Or we can all collaborate to find one, that's fine, but at least something to help out with the DCPLA with the Poilawright.
All right, Teresa, challenge accepted.
Oh, wonderful. I'd love to hear that. Okay. Uh, Victoria, did you want to say something?
Yes, um, I really appreciate that. If you guys do want to reach out to potential sponsors, I should maybe share with you the list of who we've already reached out to.
That will be nice.
Right, exactly. So I, I can put that somewhere where you guys can access it.
Okay, thank you. That's good. Great.
Thank you.
So those are our, um, agenda building until Madam President reach out to Ms. Anderson. But that's something that I just have on the top of my head right now. Okay, any public comment? Okay, well, that is our meeting for today. I think we accomplished one or two. It's so good to see you guys. I appreciate it. Thank you so.